Uh, it is nine o'clock AM. We are going to begin this work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thanks, everyone, welcome. Agenda number one, calendar review by Sandra Pettis, Executive Administrative Assistant.
Got all eight, thank you. If you guys wanna, if your computers will allow you, I hope your calendar will start figuring out. Are you ready?
Almost, just wait.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready.
That's fair.
Next week looks pretty easy, at least so far, so.
Alright.
Uh, Monday the fourteenth, uh, Lake County Forest Health Council meeting from one to three. Uh, Lake County School District Board of Education regular meeting from five thirty to eight. And planning commission meeting from four to six.
Planning commission, okay.
Okay, get those.
Yes, drive that into my skull.
Alright, Tuesday the fifteenth, uh, have our regular meeting from eleven to two. And City Council has their regular meeting from six to eight. And I believe this is still going on, I need to check on that, uh, Conservation District, they have the meeting from six to eight.
Do we need to have that posted, the conservation meeting?
Uh, it's usually on, it's a reoccurring thing on the calendar.
Okay. I've not seen it online, that was on the fifteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The Conservation District posted from their calendar, so.
Okay.
It's not, it's not necessarily on the V O C C calendar, but yeah.
Might not pop up.
Sorry, so I'm just insulting. Oh. Rude. Today is not the day. Uh, Wednesday the sixteenth, all I'm showing so far is community coffee from eight thirty to ten.
Just before I, I heard from the, uh, mayor that Emerson Patterson may be in town on the sixteenth. I know she's trying to coordinate something, I don't know the time yet, but I will let you guys know if you wanna join.
Thursday the seventeenth is the state of the community event from five to seven at four eight.
What's that? I, I don't, I guess I don't know about that, what is this?
So they do it yearly, it's with the Lake County Community Fund and the city usually are kind of the main leaders of it. But it's just a series of presentations about what's going on in the community, I think I invited you while we are presenting on the transit. It's a back community connector, so there's gonna be a variety of different presenters. Um, and then we just talk about what's going on in the community.
Okay.
Commissioner Elsa.
Yeah, not open, cash. Cash bar.
Apples, lime, tree.
Did you find, oh, sorry.
Is it?
Did you find anyone who was gonna speak on the app, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah. I was gonna be there anyway.
I still, uh, I have nothing on for that transit, I am kinda disappointed in that, so.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah. No one who lives in my whole area, Flatville North, can really access it with, you know, by the time you ride your bicycle up to the coast to stop, you're basically up and down already anyway, so. All the bird is gone, so.
Who doesn't, anybody that can ride their bike up that hill, 'cause that is just too much for me. We're starting to talk about, um, look at that airplane, um. Like every year, trying to reassess the stops too.
Yeah.
It's on, like going on the day deaths or something.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can talk about that, but even if it stopped like at the apartments or something up the street, it'd be better than that.
It does, at Eagle Pass, doesn't it?
Does it?
Yeah, but that's as far down as it come.
Oh, okay. I thought it, I thought it only went to Safeway.
By the time I pedal up to Eagle Pass, I'm like, well, might as well go that's the way it goes down.
For the weekends now.
I don't know, it's real nice.
So I, when I think about little kid, you know, younger adventurous youths, would be a bit, you know, going out on the bus and stuff and stuff.
Yeah, and that's kind of a pain from our neighborhood anyway, because there is no real sidewalk right there on Mountain View that far down, and so it's kind of dangerous for, 'cause people just.
Yeah. Yeah. Stretching. Yeah.
They drive way too fast on that road.
One of the, one of the things we're gonna talk about is how it could be better.
Yep.
It's not just, I'm not just gonna like paint a picture of how lovely and nice everything is, I'm gonna talk about like ridership, we're gonna talk about. How much it will cost to expand it, talk about how long the grant lasts.
Whereas.
About what the commu, how we're gonna make it better in the future if it's good.
Maybe I should speak. Tell my s- my not so cheery story.
Ask a question.
The other thing on the seventeenth, apparently, our congressional delegation must be off session because they're all here this week. The seventeenth, Senator Bennett is coming, he wants to talk to kind of the group that met yesterday about contingency planning based on federal and state. Budget and policy changes, so that tentatively is twelve-ish on fall, twelve thirty on the seventeenth. He's gonna be at the visitor's center, so I'll get you more information, it's still kind of in the mix.
Your home, my fucking home is coming up here.
Not each of them.
Slash, the caller preparing for a roll for some.
Watch out.
Right. Uh, okay, and then Friday the eighteenth, uh, Fire Management Board meeting from nine to eleven. Twin Lakes Community Coffee from nine to ten. And the IMTPR meeting from ten to twelve.
Were you able to make that on the eighteenth? Cause I think we thought it was the week after the Fire Management Board.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can make that. Was there any more outreach from community members about changing the departure times for Copper Mountain?
Um, it's not on here, sorry. I don't see, it's not on my schedule.
Uh, the Fire Management Board?
Yeah.
Little forward, that's cool.
You want to see?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry, fuck it. Yeah, good catch, you know.
The, um, the C M C capstone symposium is also on Friday in case someone wanna go to that.
What's the capstone symposium?
It's like the final project of the science and sustainability students. But they work on their whole, before graduation, they have to sign their capstone.
Oh wow.
And so the community is invited to then like engage with the center.
Yeah.
Engage with the projects that they did. So I'm a total local.
Sounds, yeah, I'd be at Science Fair.
Yeah, right? That's how I think of it.
Yeah.
Uh, in the packet, there's, no, I didn't have anything, but those are the memos for, for Candace and stuff, so just click on memos.
Some of that presentation?
Yeah.
No?
Oh.
Sure didn't.
Uh.
You teamed it to us?
Uh, well, actually it's in the chat, I did not.
I think you did. Yeah, I was gonna say something, hold on.
If you click on the chat, it'll be V O C C.
There you go. Okay, that's it for me, you guys need anything?
Thank you so much.
Well, thanks, Sandra. Alright, moving on, agenda item number two, we have first quarter budget presentation to include an overview of the twenty twenty-four budgeted amounts and actuals. This will be led by Finance Director Candace Bryan, Operations Director Liz Miller, and interim County Manager Lauren Snyder. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, um, this morning, we're gonna go over, this is what we call our Q one presentation. In actuality, we're gonna go over the prior quarter, which is basically the end of twenty twenty-four, so Q four, twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna go over how did we end twenty twenty-four and then start a little bit into where we're gonna go in twenty twenty-five. We do these quarterly, so when we do Q two, we'll be actually going over the close of Q one in twenty twenty-five. So May through, uh, March, and then we'll go after that, so just so you know, the sequencing of everything. Um, I wanted to give just a few shout-outs and just let you know what we're dealing with as far as data. Um, one is to just give big thanks to Candace and Will from our finance department. They spent a lot of time pulling these numbers and making sure they were valid. And then a big shout-out to Liz Miller, AKA Dr. Slaymaker. Do you know that that's where made a name is Slaymaker, and she's a doctor?
S L A Y. Yeah, R M K E R.
So I might just call her that from now on, cause it's amazing.
Is that a joke?
No, it's true.
My mother's maiden name is Pistol, so it was the Pistol Slaymaker wedding, thank you.
Wow.
Yeah. Wow.
So Dr. Slaymaker slayed it, and, um, she put together all of these, made sure the memos went out, and made sure people followed up in, in filling out their memos and spent a lot of time, so.
Nice.
Um, thank you to Liz, today would not be happening without her, so thank you all, um.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Dr. Slaymaker.
I wanna call my powder snowboard, Dr. Slaymaker.
You should. It's pretty awesome.
Um, so I just wanted to clarify, so this is, uh, close of twenty twenty-four. When you look at this data, it is not a complete set yet. We have been closing books in December, and we're still getting, um, revenues from, uh, invoices we sent out in December right now. So these revenues are not a hundred percent correct. We are still closing things out, but it's more or less close, so I'm gonna go through here and tell you, some of these revenues are not a hundred percent. Uh, but we're getting close, in the next few months, we will a hundred percent have it closed, but we wanna close twenty twenty-four and give you an overview in July, right, so. Um, uh, also, yeah. So just wanted to go over, um, expectations for the rest of the year. Today, we're going over twenty twenty-four budgeted and actuals. In July, we will go over quarter one, so January, February, March of twenty twenty-five. Um, right after we go over Q one of twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have some deeper conversations about what you all want to see moving into twenty twenty-six. Where are your priorities, what are your expectations, how you want us to clean things up, et cetera, so. Um, if you can just keep those dates on your calendar, that's currently what we have scheduled, is July ninth, is to really get some high-level guidance from the V O C C. As we move into deep budget season. Um, August fourth, uh, I will be sending, or sorry, the county manager will be sending out, uh, budget guidance to staff. Saying what are our expectations, last year, we sent five percent across the board cuts to services and supplies, no new F T E. Um, are we gonna do something similar? Um, so that's the type of guidance we're gonna be sending out. Um, what's new this year is, this is a month ahead of time, usually we were doing this in September, now we're doing it in August, because we are getting better every year. Uh, with our budget. And finance is gonna spend the time meeting one-on-one with each department before they start building out their budget. So that they know how to do it in an appropriate way, how are they budgeting for grants? Um, how are they budgeting for their F T E? Are they remembering to bring things over from the year prior that were unspent? So making sure that we're having those conversations before they start, uh, with their asks for twenty twenty-six.
Um, real quick, if it's something we're doing differently than, than last year or previously, we just, I would let us know, like, this year, we're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Because I know you guys are working so hard on making improvements and changes, and I just, I wanna know the full scope of like, how, how much we're growing and improving and doing these things better, you know?
So I think change management is gonna be a huge part of our budget and a lot of the work that we do here at Lake County Government, so that it sticks, and that it's not painful, and that it's not confusing. So, we have made these kind of incremental changes, and the really big one for this, going into the twenty twenty-six budget cycle, is pulling everything back just a little bit. So the three of you were at our November thir- or excuse me, our December thirteenth meeting, and you saw us flying the plane while putting on the wings, figuring out meals and capital requests. We're gonna do that a month earlier. Um, and a lot of that stuff, we're gonna start the work in the summer, but those decisions will come a month earlier. That's really exciting, 'cause that was a very hard moment to put that on display and make sure that we were doing it all right. Um, and the other really big thing is, we've kind of provided budget guidance in the past, we've provided memos. And that's been really good for departments, but I think spending some quality time with Candace, our finance director, as well as the finance team. Is really gonna help our department, um, and budgetary heads understand how their budget is made up. How it has changed over the past two years and how it has not changed. So I'm really excited about all of that quality time, it's gonna be a huge lift for Candace and the finance team, 'cause I've blocked out three weeks of her life, was like, surprise! But that's the work that we need to do.
Yeah.
To make sure we have the fluency in our numbers, both from finance side, executive leadership side, and then also on the departmental side.
Okay.
So that's October.
So, so far.
It'll be in August.
Okay.
It just seems like a lot of departments were in historic years handed their budget, and then there was a shift to asking them to create their budget and manage it. Um, but it seems like there's a, a, a little bit of like a lack of background knowledge to understand how to achieve creating their budget so that they can own it. And so my goal in those sessions is to work for people to understand, here's what you budgeted for in the past and how you get it taken out. And here's thinking strategically about this year and future years, so that they can start to understand their budget and understand how we create a budget. So this will be really the first year we have a clearly, this is the process, this is when we submit requests, when we ask for more staff here, so we do it. So building that process to go along with the policies we're discussing this afternoon, so that people actually understand what they're being asked to do. And have an opportunity to ask for help if they're in.
You're doing this across like thirty-something departments?
Yeah.
Three weeks.
That's right, three weeks.
Two departments a day.
I did have a question, July ninth, we have a work session?
Yes.
So is that, so are we supposed to like gather some ideas before the work session? Or is it the work session where we start hashing it out, and then a week, a month later, it will be decided so that the county manager can send it to staff?
So the way that I was kind of envisioning it, and this is very flexible, some of these milestones may change. But on the morning work session of July eighth, we're gonna go over Q one, twenty twenty-five budget. Kind of give you a picture of what we think that this, um, year is going to look like, the fiscal year. We can use the afternoon work session to start hashing it out and having those conversations. So, are your priorities still the same, are we investing in housing, are we being, investing in economic and social stability? That's the time to think about that, 'cause your priorities are gonna direct how we budget and where we put the funds.
Yeah.
So I think the afternoon, we can kind of go through that, we can provide examples from past years, so you kind of know what it has looked like for folks. And then I think on the ninth, we can kind of make that a little bit tighter. And from there, we can draft a memo that kind of captures what you all are thinking of, and kind of work through that. And have that month to get to August fourth, when we release that twenty twenty-six budget guidance.
Yeah.
Great.
So yes, um, October first through ninth, don't take a vacation, it's gonna be a really heavy week. Um, this is where your departments, right now, you get the departments coming in for Q one, Q two. Um, or up until October, but in October, all of the departments are gonna come in and not only present their year-to-date actuals, right? What they're spending in twenty twenty-five, they're gonna give you a preliminary overview of what's in their budget. Um, and then they're gonna go over their short and long-term goals. So this is gonna be where a lot of the rubber hits the road. Uh, you all crafting what you see from departments, shifting it, changing short-term priorities, what you wanna see, what you don't wanna see. Um, and then really getting a good grasp on how we're doing, um, being through the fiscal way through the year, so. Um, that's gonna be the heavy day, and then, um, on November twelfth, and this happened late, mid-December last year, so we're a whole month ahead of time, yay. Um, we're gonna go over year-to-date, so Q one, Q two, Q three, actuals, what we have spent to date. Um, and then what we're expecting to close out twenty twenty-five in. Um, and then we're gonna go over the twenty twenty-six budget as well, and this is where you're gonna start making decisions around capital requests. What you wanna do with the mill levy scenario, do you wanna keep it at where it's at, do you wanna go higher, go lower? Um, and we can start doing those scenarios to really firm up the budget and pass it.
Beginning of December, is that what this is?
So December fifteenth is when you statutorily have to pass the budget, I have it a week before December fifteenth. Um, 'cause that just gives us a really good landing if that date doesn't work. So, I'm excited, yeah. Does this feel good, any feedback from us, or does this feel attainable for you all?
This feels good to me so far.
Yes, it's awesome.
Great. Alright, so, um, again, Dr. Slaymaker sent out some memos to all of the departments as well as the offices. Uh, this is the information, these are all in your, um, in your Teams folder, so you can go through every department. See where they closed twenty twenty-four out, as far as their budget, what they budgeted, where their actuals are. And have updates on their personnel, updates on the short and long-term, or short-term goals, Safeway, so if you're ever in Safeway, you have three sentences on what to say about what's going on at the airport. Or what's going on at public health, they have written them for you. So if you have time, it did take a lot of staff time to put those together, um, that is your information to know how to be closed twenty twenty-four.
Where do I find this?
So they are in your packet for today, um, there is a folder called memos, and then it's grouped in the seven big buckets.
Okay.
And we'll talk about those buckets a little bit later on.
Okay.
And then that's a chart about what they budgeted for twenty twenty-four, what their actuals are, and where they're at in twenty twenty-five. Also with a narrative of like, hey, maybe they really were underspent in personnel. They'll go through, we couldn't hire for X Y Z position, it took us six months to do it, so you're really gonna have a narrative about why their budget ended where it did.
Mm-hmm.
If you have time, or you all have tons, but, um, that's a really good source. Um, every department in every office did send those in. Why is it doing this? Um, did send them in except for one elected office. So, um, we're moving into, uh, our presentation for twenty twenty-four, wanted to start with just some definitions of. Well, how we're breaking out the budget for twenty twenty-four. Well, the first one is gonna be our general fund, this is comprised of mainly property tax, our sales tax, and then fees, charges for services, so. Um, you go in and get a permit from C P D, that goes into the general fund, um, those types of things. Our non-general fund, uh, are gonna be a bunch of different, um, different types of funds that we've just brought together. So enterprise fund, it's gonna be airport, water, and landfill. Our grant fund, again, are gonna be our grants that we brought in. Intergovernmental is E nine-one-one and ambulance. Internal services fund is, um, basically like our insurance, our employee benefits that we, um, have together in case we need to pay individuals out for short-term disability or otherwise. P T O, et cetera. Internal ser- or sorry, just one of the statutory fund are going to be road and bridge, apartment human services and public health. Uh, courthouse renovation, self-explanatory, this is where our C O P is going to live. Um, and then non-major governmental, that's like the mineral belt trail, 'cause yes, we have their funding, some of it. Blood lead, search and rescue, and then our capital acquisition fund. So, alright, we go over non-general fund, it's all of those, anything basically not general fund. Okay, so for twenty twenty-four are all funds, so general fund and everything else are revenue and actuals. So what we brought in was about forty-five million. Again, just wanna say with revenues, we are still bringing those in right now, so this is gonna change likely going up. Um, fifty-five percent of that was non-general fund, and forty-five percent being general fund. For expenses, we have about forty point three million, fifty-two percent of that being general fund, forty-eight percent being non-general fund. See. So all funds, this is general fund and non-general fund revenue and actuals, um.
Can you just hold on just a second?
Yeah.
Where can I find that on the computer? I'm lost, oh, here it is. Sorry.
All good. Are you looking for the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
It, uh, it popped up the window.
I think it's in the folders. I, I just put it in the folders.
It's there, yeah, yeah.
I need, I need to refresh, I guess. Thanks, Andy. Why is it not on? Someone help.
I got it, I got it. Let's see.
It's the PowerPoint, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's the little red icon.
It's not, it's not seeing.
So I did drop it in there, the internet's being sort of very slow today.
You're just having, using airplane mode?
I won't forget anything.
So this means that like you're not accessing it?
No wonder I didn't get any emails this morning.
That's like you're being in the front of an airplane.
Okay. All weekend. Should've done that last Friday.
Yeah.
Hides itself in there.
It's good strategy.
Yeah, it is.
I keep my Kindle in airplane mode, 'cause then, uh, whatever you blow can't bounce back at the end of the term.
Yeah. And that's the only thing that should be in airplane mode. So when you borrow a book, if you go for an audiobook, if your device stays in airplane mode, it can't connect to the internet and return.
Oh, so your auto-return does engage?
Yeah.
Okay, brilliant.
So that little airplane down at the bottom means.
You're on airplane.
Yeah. Um, you're gonna have to carry all your emails.
Parking bed for that.
I mean, uh, to be fair, I've only got like a few emails, way less than normal.
Okay.
Over the, you know, the weekend and even yesterday, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm glad you guys got a good lot out of that.
Uh, so this is all funds, revenue actuals, so the yellow chart, or the yellow bar is showing what we budgeted, the blue is actuals. You can see we, um, we budgeted for thirty-four percent more in revenue than what we actually brought in. This is again where I say we are still closing out the year, so, uh, all, most of those are, uh, revenues that we are still counting. Um, don't freak out yet.
Alright, what's gonna say, it's his.
Just a little add to, to explain what she's saying here. People finish their expenses in December, and in particular, grants and state money that we get, they submit those expenses for reimbursement. And those reimbursements come in in January and December of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
We post those receipts when we've confirmed with departments back to December of twenty twenty-five, it's called an accrual. So we post that entry back to that date, we wait till we've got through January, February, meet with departments individually, say, here's the list of transactions we've identified. How many of these did you plan to post back, because they know their budgets, and so we are in that process right now. I think we'll have it done by this point next year, because we won't be closing an entire fiscal year all in January.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll just be closing the last month of the year and waiting for those receipts.
Okay, so, um, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah.
My, my initial shock.
We did not forget that, there's still coming kind of rest to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, 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 I know to listen to you guys and you'll explain it, and usually things work out really nicely, um, with, with this team we have here. Uh, my concern is when, you know, if there's other people out in the community who are similar to me, it would be like, oh, wait, what? Like, we're, you know, we've only brought in that much, and we thought we were gonna make that much.
So, adding to that, I pulled these numbers on April first, and then I just went through with all the numbers to check them this morning, and I'm already seeing that variance of that work. And then I was like, ooh, I should, I'll change them, so it'll be out today, and I was like, no, don't change them, just stay with what we have. So it's really dependent on the date that you pull.
Yeah.
What you get, 'cause the work that's being done on the backend.
Yeah.
I did suggest maybe in the future, waiting a little later to review the end of the year, so maybe that we're reviewing the end of twenty-four and kind of the forward look to Q one. So we can capture those a little more accurately. We talked about policies this afternoon, I'm gonna suggest that we don't accrue things back after sixty days, because the longer we wait for people's approvals. The longer you guys have to wait for us to post those adjustments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's really nice.
But also, any charts or anything like this that are available to the public, we should have the little asterisk at the bottom.
Yeah.
Might explain, you know, just to avoid misinformation out there.
So, moving into expenses, we were actually twenty percent under budget, so we budgeted in on the yellow to spend more than we actually did spend. So although we brought in less revenue, we also spent less.
Will this be the same story though as the year? Will this be the same story though as the year goes on as far as?
No, no.
Okay.
Are, is it a, are we still waiting, since April first, when these numbers were pulled, are we expecting eleven million dollars worth of expenses?
Yeah, so expenses, because we're modified accrual, they can hit when they happen, so you.
No, no. No, I know, I'm, I meant, go back, go back on. Twenty-nine-seven, up to forty, the difference between what's actually.
I don't think it'll be that, that full amount because I think if people over-budgeted, budgeted their revenues, what I'd really love to do in our budget process is you have to remember everyone in their department is budgeting off of what they think they did for the last.
Two years.
Yeah.
And if we haven't closed the books, spent time and accrued things for twenty-three, people are going off of numbers that just were not completely accurate.
Yes. Yeah.
So I do think we'll see maybe around like ten, eleven-ish, but I don't think it's gonna be for twenty-four.
No, but what I'm saying is that to go, to go actual spend versus actual revenue is what I'm trying to say. I'm looking for eleven million in our revenue to make up for the forty.
Forty expense.
Yes.
Got you, yeah, sorry.
That's ours, no, it's okay. Not bad. But, but you think that we're gonna get to that balanced budget or something?
Yes. We will be pretty close to it, there were quite a lot of revenues to post back and no one's, mm, shouldn't say no one. In the last few years, accruals have not been posted because the books weren't, the audit wasn't done till the next year.
Yeah.
Um, so people have never been able to fully capture those revenues or have their expenses accrued back for them to really know when they're creating their budgets.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
That's what we need.
Let's use real numbers.
What a concept.
Sounds great.
So now we're gonna dive into general fund, um, where you see what we budgeted and the actuals are much closer. Uh, so we're all within seven percent, we budgeted twenty-two million, brought in twenty point seven. Um, and then looking for expenses, it's even closer, so we're within four percent. This to me shows like general fund when we're not including, you know, intergovernmental or grants etcetera. We really dialed in.
Mm-hmm.
Than three or four percent. Um, so yay, that makes me feel great.
It's good to be a little under as opposed to a little bit over.
Yeah, o- overall, we have, um, we were conservative in um, in both areas and we came in in the black.
May I, may I just piggyback off of what Andy said? It would be valuable to include a slide in here that shows actual expenses to actual revenues.
Yeah.
And then that ghost anticipated accrual. So that, so that, I mean, people will absolutely just pull some of these slides and be like, and go nutso, which is, I'm not trying to change their behavior, but I do want people to be properly informed, so to like help people read this, it would be.
Listen, we're gonna talk about the future of roof.
Lovely, yes.
Include some items that are direct to a huge.
Love it. Okay. Oh my god.
You guys' constant evolution of this is always impressive, so thank you for, you know, always keeping us improving.
You don't even need us.
So when we talk about non-general fund, um, we wanna run some of these groups. Um, we just wanted to break out so that you understand um, who your major drivers are for revenue sources. Um, obviously the courthouse renovation is a little bit of an anomaly this year since we took out a COP. Uh, so that brought in about thirty-three percent. Normally your statutory, so road and bridge, DHS, public health are, are main drivers of non-general fund revenue collections. So those are your state allocations, HUTF, PIL dollars. Um, and then we had grants coming in at around ten percent. IGA, um, and enterprise making up just, just under ten percent, uh, etcetera. So just want you to know, your statutory departments definitely drive your non-general fund revenue sources.
What's an example of enterprise, like the airport?
Airport, water and landfill.
Anybody that operates like a normal business, they charge for services, they bring in revenues and, and the way that they account for them is a little more like a normal business.
Okay, but that's just their overall contribution that doesn't account for any expenses or, okay.
Just, I'm sorry, just so I understand too. Statutory, you're saying that's coming from the state to pay for our statutory performance? Okay, thank you. And then non-major governmental.
That's like mineral, mineral belt trail, uh, blood lead dollars, uh, search and rescue, capital acquisition. Goal, rectuplacement fund, conservation trust, uh, so that's kind of our catch-all to put everything in there.
Go. Okay, non-major.
If you look at our audit, it kind of breaks them out into these buckets and so Liz and I tried to really reflect what we're putting out in the audit so that people didn't feel that there was a disconnect between what our auditors report for types of funds and what we should have.
But I see you thinking, and just wait.
Yeah.
We get to that slide. Alright, so this is how we organize our departments uh, on our website internally, so we have our elected offices. You all, the Cesar, Clerk, and Recorder, Coroner, DA, Sheriff and Treasurer. Uh, I just wanna note that the Sheriff is an elected office, they are not part of public safety. Uh, so you'll see that when, in both the Treasurer and the Sheriff, they are both your main, well, the Treasurer is your main driver for revenue, right? Cause that's where property taxes, sales tax come in through. Sheriff is your most expensive office, uh, it is for most counties. So it's both your main driver for revenues and also expenditures. Um, but I know that can be a little confusing not having the Sheriff under public safety. Admin is going to be county attorney, manager, finance, operations, HR, rec and culture, that's pros, library, CSU extension. Public safety, uh, OEM, these are some of our stepchildren also, so SAR, uh, animal shelter and E nine one. Um, public health, human services, those two departments. Um, and then airport, community planning, tourism, water, all in, community development, and then public works is all itself. Alright, so by department, um, basically Patrick at the Treasurer's office is the main driver for revenue. Um, I don't think many, other than the clerk or recorder really drive that much revenue, this is all your property tax, sales tax. So CPD, community planning and development is probably your largest general-ish fund driver of revenue. And when this data is reinterpreted and you take elected offices out of it, that's your biggest one. And CPD is also working on a fee impact study because I believe they have not raised the prices for permits and licenses in many, many boroughs.
Yes.
So that's also gonna shift and as we think about economic development and change in landfill, their capacity to raise revenue is gonna change.
Yeah.
That, that's actually, they, they raised it, they raised fees last year?
Yep, and they have a plan to kind of cascade those fees, yes.
They're a three-year. Yeah, they're a three-year, I'm scared. Yes, and we're talking about, and they're looking to impact these.
So.
Fees, fees and more fees.
Yeah.
Where's housing so expensive?
If it's for fees. Uh, so other big drivers, DHS, public health, again, those state allocations uh, coming in to pay for those. Public works, again, those state allocations coming in, uh, revenue, rec, library, love them, but they're not big revenue generators. But they love to spend the money, okay. Uh, actually, they're not too far off.
They don't sell much, yeah.
I know, Brenna just always loves to say that she loves to spend.
Yeah, I love that, okay.
Um, elected offices, the main driver for uh, for elected offices is gonna be Sheriff's Office. Um, and then admin, uh, public works, DHS, uh, they bring in a, they bring in about half, maybe-ish, almost all of what they, they um, they cost, so. Alright, um, rollups, so as we go into the budget season, you'll hear a lot about chart of accounts, rollups, issues with them. I wanted to go over to make you comfortable with what those categories are, cause you're gonna see them over and over and over again and I want you to know what's all included in them, this is a very normal part of budgeting. We don't want you to have to look through hundreds of line items, that's not a good use in anyone's times. Those line items basically roll up into these larger buckets. So, you'll see in revenue categories, taxes, that's sales tax, property tax, that was pretty much the easiest one. Uh, license and permits is a rollup, so like CPD has special events, building permits, etcetera. Uh, intergovernmental, this, um, we have a lot of finessing to do with revenues around intergovernmental and miscellaneous. Some of our money that comes from the state gets put into miscellaneous when it should go into intergovernmental, we are working on it.
Mm-hmm.
But be patient with us, our primary goal is relative. That's right, before we focus on that. Um, charges for services, right? I used six-year gym this weekend, I gave six dollars an hour, I gave, rose eighteen dollars, it goes into charges for services. Uh, program fees, other public services, fines, so that's gonna be, um, you know, what you get when you get a ticket, etcetera. Um, and then grants and contributions, um, pretty straightforward. Miscellaneous is where we have a lot of work to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on interest transfers, etcetera, uh, but we are working on that. So I wanted you to know.
Candace, do you anticipate that when you're working with, when my instructor's working with, um, the individual departments, you're going to be helping them make sure that things are not rolled up into miscellaneous that should be in some of these buckets?
So I'm really excited to address that with our reporting, so what? Right here, I move this role, what seems to be the issue is the chart of accounts are wrong and so they are wanting us to change accounting practices to match reports they'd like to see.
Mm-hmm.
We follow generally accepted accounting principles gap, which were established by the, by Gatsby.
Yeah.
And for governments. So we wanna use correct accounting principles and then use our reporting tools to visualize those in ways that work for different departments.
Yeah.
Rather than change how we account for things to make reports work.
Yeah.
So Liz and I are gonna show you guys kind of our ideas about visualizing those for departments. It doesn't really matter what happens in Tyler, we wanna pass our audit. What matters is that people can see things in the buckets they need to see them in.
Yeah.
So we're gonna work with people to understand where they need to see different items in their reports.
Mm-hmm.
Cause reporting isn't necessarily how things are recorded from an accounting standpoint.
Yeah.
And I think there's been a, just a misunderstanding of Tyler, reporting, how reports could be filled for departments. So we are gonna work with each department to understand where would you like to see your rollups? If someone's asking to completely report something that should not be in a particular area, I'll discuss that. Let them say, hey, we really can't show that there, that is not what that is.
Yeah, yeah.
But in terms of miscellaneous, we'll be able to filter those in their reports so they can see what they are anticipating in their head.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than be confused by everything that's like chunked into one category, like, well, that's not what I budgeted for.
Mm-hmm.
So we are gonna work on understanding those pieces with departments and creating reports that are usable for them.
Yeah.
Because your report might look different depending on the audience.
Yeah. Thank you.
So these are the rollups uh, across departments for revenue. You see taxes, we are pretty close, uh, didn't.
So where you see the intergovernmental and miscellaneous rollups, but you know.
Yes, yep, exactly.
Yeah, cool.
Um.
Just to clarify the term rollup, that's, that's, that's the big number, that's the number at the bottom.
Bucketting.
Yeah, so, um, you know, and they have three different lines for, ones for building permits, ones for special tack, like special permits, you know, she has three different lines. They roll up into charges for services or permits and licenses.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, intergovernmental, this also is really helpful for us as we move into next year budgeting of like, okay, where do we need to get better at budgeting, right? We had, um, just understanding these differences, where we brought in more than what we expected, where we brought in less.
But this isn't necessarily showing this, I, I wanna make sure I understand it. This isn't necessarily showing us where our budgeting was off, this is potentially bucketing properly.
Your organization.
Is getting our intergovernmental revenues to go into the intergovernmental as opposed to going under miscellaneous.
It's a little bit of a hole.
So it's not like the budgeting is off, it's like, it's a little bit of a hole, yeah.
It's a little bit, okay, okay. It's, at the end of the day, I don't think directors are as comfortable with their budgets as they need to be, right?
Okay.
Every director needs to be more comfortable of where, like, knowing their rollups and what's, what the lines are in there because they're budgeting to those lines, they shouldn't be budgeting to the rollups.
Yeah. Right.
Right? This line goes in, like, I'm putting this grant that I want into this line.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm budgeting, um, where I think a lot of them are just budgeting to, to lines right now, or to rollups.
To rollups, okay.
But it also is helpful for me to know, okay, um, charges for services, we brought in a lot more, maybe not a lot more, but we brought in more than we budgeted, can we do a deep dive into CPD? What was going on, is this an anomaly, is this what we should expect? So I think it's a little bit of a hole.
Okay.
Would you guys know anything else?
I think it's great to see where people didn't understand by pulling the previous two years that you're planning the next year and the future, which is how we should be budgeting going forward. So that they can see, oh, I really thought I wouldn't have any postage, but it turns out I did, but I had to drop it in miscellaneous because I didn't budget funds for it.
Yeah.
We also are required to budget at the fund level. So it's okay if people don't know every expense they're gonna have. What's important is that as we learn those things, we do a better job budgeting the next year.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, expense categories. Uh, personnel, pretty straightforward, it's not just their pay that they get paid salary, it's the fringe, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, holiday pay, wellness program, etcetera. Um, that's also gonna be health insurance. Training is going to be professional development, if you go to a conference, uh, dues, memberships, etcetera. Professional services, um, this is usually like external consultants, so if you get a grant, you hire a consultant to do work from that grant, you put it into professional services. I will just say, this is where we have the most room for growth in our budget in being, um, better planners and better budgeting. Across the board, all departments have expected, um, more expenses uh, from professional services than, um, what they spent as well as revenue. I believe so. Uh, services, so telephone, utilities, day-to-day operations, supplies, paper wars, pens, that kinda stuff. Um, other, it just didn't fit into a defined category, so we'll go over that. As you see, personnel is our, one of our largest drivers of our budget. Uh, there's about a three million, so all these numbers are actuals, just so you know. Um, there's about a three million dollar drop right here. This is gonna be driven by vacancies, turnover, um, the Sheriff's Office, for example, has a number of like de- patrol deputies that are really hard to, um, to fill. And if they have a vacancy, they're pretty high wages, so we're talking about like eighty or ninety thousand dollars a year. But we've got multiple vacancies, it adds up. So, um, this shows me, you know, we, we, um, maybe have an issue right there, but. Um, supplies, not too bad, services, not too bad. Again, this is where I'm saying, professional services, we way, we thought we were gonna spend a lot more than we actually did. Uh, and this is across departments. So going into twenty twenty-six, we're gonna spend a lot of time kind of pulling apart professional services. What are people expecting, were people just expecting to get grants, then they didn't get them? Or did they get a grant and they didn't spend the money as quickly as they thought? Um, so we're gonna spend some time trying to figure that out. Training, I know it's tiny, but we are underspending in training and I think that's something that we need to talk to our staff about. Um, using professional development, getting better trained, uh, it's like use it or lose it type of thing. Um, so trying to understand, why are we taking advantage of these dollars where we wanna invest in their staff?
Lauren, in your opinion, do you think boosting training would help us in a lot of situations reduce professional service costs?
I think there's a huge opportunity for that, when you expand someone's knowledge base so they have additional skills or ideas to offer our organization for creativity and innovation, then yes, we can invest less in external services. Um, you know, speaking to the IT, that's what I really wanna do.
Um you know, speaking to the IT, that's what I really wanna do. I want Sebastian to get Cisco certified to work on servers. Spending four thousand dollars on him to have that knowledge base reduced our reliance on external costs dramatically. It also just gives that human more opportunities, whether here or outside there. And we are an organization that must invest in our people. So helping folks see what we can do with knowledge gain could be an opportunity to reduce professional services in a very appropriate way.
I'll chime in on this too. This also goes into, we have professional services outside special counsel. One of the things we've been working towards is to build that expertise in-house for some of this stuff. There's some areas that are so technical, we might not ever get there depending on who the incumbents are, like order and requirement count and such. But otherwise, I think we have been successful in bringing more of that in-house versus having to pay market rate attorney's fees for outside special counsel.
So Ellie and I kinda discussed this, training and education are really important. Um because we don't have a formalized process for how someone could ask. To do that, it's hard for, you know, the police don't know, like they could ask for us to pay for our trainings and because it's not clear that they can.
Yeah.
That's a hard question, it's just like, oh, are you, are you gonna have to spend extra money on budget? And if your department director doesn't particularly prioritize that piece, then you might feel even more like you can't ask for that. So I think one of the policy things at thought are to maybe create a clear path and way to ask to utilize those funds so that we are reducing professional services and you don't see unfilled personnel positions. You see that people can be growing in their position and then fill maybe an even more challenging, more direct impactful within their department because we invested in them.
Mm-hmm.
And had a process so they have buy-in to stay with us after the training.
Well, and I, I guess to me, one of the things that it's, that I'm seeing is that like, why would department heads have budgeted for training but not invested in their people? Like what is that disconnect? Like why are they not managing their training budget in a way that enhances their crew? Are they just like strapped and they aren't building in the time to allow these people to get trained? Do they not understand that once they budgeted, they had to spend it? Like what is going on at a director level that makes that difference happen?
The training roll up also includes travel expenses per DMs.
Yeah.
So that could be influencing that differential in that number as well, that they did local trainings instead of trainings at a state level. So there's factors fueling it, but I guess what you're kind of pulling out is a very real question.
Yeah, I think our departments are, like a lot of our directors are frontline working too, you know?
Yeah.
That aren't, you don't have the time or space to work at a director level all the time.
Yeah.
Michael drives like snowplows, you know, and.
Which I'm, yeah, and I'm saying to me, like we are managing people. So it's not like a criticism that a director didn't use their training. It's a, it's a point of curiosity of like, okay, what do you, director, need to be able to use that budget line? As opposed to like, why aren't you using that, why aren't you good at this?
I think it's a culture shift too.
Yes, yes.
We're just getting organized so that we can start to focus on more than just the immediate issues.
How to do, barely, yeah, we're, we're, we're crawling out of that, right?
We're getting there, I think, and that's just a culture shift to be a county of like investing in our people and growth and organization. And I just think we're still young in that.
Yeah, for sure. And the process is obviously valuable too, because a culture shift means that there has to be like a pathway to be able to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Not just putting money in a bucket.
Thanks for letting me chat about that.
Yeah. Um but these are good, you know, this is the type of thing that I think you're gonna do department by department, like let's reflect. What do these numbers mean?
Yeah.
Can you tell, give me some understanding and then we can create something that are moving forward. Um asset management, so these are um purchases over five thousand dollars, the sheriff's vehicle leases in here, and then his Motorola reviews. So I think that's probably why we, it was a little over um, it was an expensive year. Okay, um, do you wanna take off this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am so excited to argue people on budget planning because when we understand our budgets, we can manage them better and plan for things like educating and retaining our staff. So budget planning, um we, what I've noticed is we say in all of our policies, you will be planning for the next five years. And I don't really see a lot of evidence of that, it's just like, oh my gosh, get through this year, capital request right before we can like approve the budget. So we are being really intentional to think about, okay, here's what you did in the past, here's where we are now, here's what we think we'll do in the next five years. Um part of that is to also help departments understand if you receive two hundred thousand dollars for an item that you never used it in that calendar year, we need to be assessing that as we approach the end of the year to say, oh, that's a supplemental move to the next year's budget. So those revenues you maybe already captured that are for something, don't get left out of your next year's budget. So we really are gonna work on looking backwards, looking forwards, um projecting out what we think we'll do. And of course, things happen, like you lose all your grant funding because we just decided to cancel grants left and right, who knows that's gonna happen? That's an adjustment you have to make, you can't, you wouldn't probably projected that in five-year projection. But as you're checking in every month, you're refining your projections. Um what we really love, and I'm so excited, and this is a silly thing to be excited about, I'm so excited to go through the policies because they really come from a lens of, we want things in place to help you do your job and to empower you to own your budget through controlling your expenses and being physically responsible. So I really wanna engage with the departments to understand and own like what their, what their budget is so they can direct where they wanna see things. We don't know, we in finance have thousands of transactions and it's, you know the grant you submitted a reimbursement for, you know that those months are coming in. You've got to tell us, we don't know if, if you don't tell us. So I really wanna empower people to understand their budget and to own it. And that'll be a little bit of a walk-in place with people to handoff situation. Um Liz and I are really looking at using Power BI, which we talked about, um to, yeah, to show people dynamic reporting that allows them to look at um different metrics that can change the filtering in real time. We're really excited.
Yeah, so this has kind of been one of my dreams since I came to the county. I'm working a little bit with the budget, I'm like, why are we using Power BI? And I was always waiting on someone else to do it. And I've really been given the opportunity in the moment to figure it out myself, and I've had so much fun playing with this data. And so we really do wanna create dynamic reporting. We're gonna do it better than this, but this gives you kind of the idea of what it can look like. Um and so when I think about what we need to report with our data, we have three distinct stakeholders or user groups we wanna communicate with. Department heads or budgetary heads, the uh front-facing public, and then also our executive leadership.
Mm-hmm.
So even though it's the same information, we kinda need to tell it in three different ways so it's useful and usable to those audiences. And this is a powerful, flexible software that we can do it. Right now, Tyler, our software that does our budgeting spits out, it's gnar gnar. It's taken me two years to figure out kind of what it needs and manipulate it in a way to tell that budget story. This is gonna allow me to do it with clicks. And so talking about how miscellaneous revenue, I can set a rule for a department that miscellaneous revenue, this line, what it is this, goes here.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really hard for folks to cognitively talk about their budget when they're like, well, that doesn't belong there.
Mm-hmm.
And so changing the system, we can manipulate it with a filter to tell the story of what they think it should be. And we can do it very high level and then we can drill down. So the visualization of the data that I've shown you today, it took me all week to put that together and think about it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's now gonna be a successful tool when we go into August and start doing budgeting. But I'm gonna have it all built out so Candace can just click the buttons with our departments, show them how to navigate this tool and have all these visualizations right there to talk about our budget story. We're gonna do two years past, and then we're gonna push into the future because there's all sort of predictive modules in there. And so this is Jefferson County Jeffco's uh financial transparency portal.
We won't be adopting a budget that's sixty-one million dollars in the budget, really?
I was like, how is this real?
This is, this is what we are working towards. This is what we are gonna put on our website, this is what our front-facing dashboard is gonna be. And very hopeful for Q two, we can have it. So we also wanna make sure it's right and it's contextualized in a way, you know, having those asterisks, having those, you're to support it. So when we do Q two, it's really my goal to have this front-facing, have it back-facing for all of our department heads, and then have the right story for all of you as well. So I'm excited about this feature. I think that it solves some of our internal problems, but then it also gives us that visual voice on the front end.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just getting side swiped with anxiety from the screen right now because Jefferson County's like three late counties over budget.
Yeah.
And it's interesting.
Lauren, will you scroll down too?
It's interesting as we sit here.
So, oop, scroll up, I see it, so these are the different dashboards in Power BI and you can kind of navigate in it.
Yeah.
So there's different ways to visually tell this story, that we can do it from a fund level, general versus non, or we can do it by a departmental level. And any human will be able to click the buttons, you won't need any additional training.
Question.
Are you sure about that?
Well, yeah.
How does this, how does this, um, how does it work with Tyler? Like is it easy, is it hard, is it actually work?
It's fine. So when you export from Tyler, you can do it as a comma separated value or a CSV, and that's what databases like to read.
Yeah.
You boop it into um Power BI.
Mm-hmm.
And then you tell it what you want it to grab and aggregate, and then you click buttons and it creates the visual. So there's a little bit of AI behind it, but there's also just a lot of thought behind it. Doing it in the way that you are representing the data accurately, but you're making it a way so that it's, it's readable and anyone can understand it.
Sure.
So it's just a lot of fun playing with the database.
It's here, Candace.
So I think maybe what you're thinking in your head is, is there root for error, somebody's manipulating data. So when we pull things from Tyler, we're downloading, we're never copying tabs, we're always using B lookups and H lookups to pull data forward. We're never copying or creating anything like that, so that is the hard data coming from Tyler. It's being filtered so that anything that is coming out has come directly from there.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't realize on the forward ports from Tyler, some things live in the grant fund and some things live in your budget.
Mm-hmm.
But they're not in the same fund, so unless you know to pull both sets of those data, you won't get your complete picture as a department director. So we're trying to make sure that we're creating those complete pictures for people at our heart for them to recognize when we're pulling Tyler. It's not that they can't be pulled, it's just very confusing.
Yeah.
We don't need our staff to be high-level accountants to be able to understand the budgets.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't worried so much that information would be missing, I was just worried that it would be because of how it could be interpreted by this, if it would actually tell the story, like if it's compatible with Tyler, not is it getting all the information, but, okay, cool.
Yes. Yeah.
So there is an API that we can play, so an API is gonna be a bridge between two softwares, so they just feed into each other without any sort of human intervention.
Yeah.
But also we can set up, so once we figure out the exact reports we want, or the information that we want in Tyler, we can have Power BI set up to be like once a month, we're dropping these reports into this folder, you take it and you upload it.
Yeah.
So this is gonna have to take really good planning, a lot of trial and error, but once we have it set up, that's when I even laugh, I'm like, capital.
It'll be a great communication tool.
Yes.
One, just that you can click through it in real time, to see a visualization that resonates with the user the most. And that's really what I think is the most important about an interactive update.
It's friggin' awesome.
Yeah, it's gonna reward the people who wanna, who put the time into digging through it, like there's a lot of it.
Yeah, but Jeffco did all of its practices, their pie chart, it should only be like about five slices, oh man.
Well, it's just helpful, you know, if people are asking, hey, look at all these potholes, where's all my taxpayer dollars going?
It's like, well, this is our expenditures, right? Like sheriff's office is expensive.
And you don't have to cora it, which is nice.
Click drill, could you click drill down?
You don't have to cora it.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Could you go back to sheriff and then when you hover over it, the drill down, or click on it maybe? Yeah.
Cute.
And so you're clicking on that and it's updating on the other side, so we can see that and.
Does that, does that part of the pie slice, when you click on it, show it is relative to the amount of the pie slice, the bytes that are being taken out of it by those departments within departments?
So when she just clicked drill down, it drill, it like went down into the, I think she was on sheriff, so you can see at a higher level what went into.
Okay.
Seventy-four million dollars.
Yes.
I got a lot of roads though.
TBH, yes, that's true. Um their district attorney is expensive, we spent my two, two hundred and forty thousand. Food services, yeah, so.
What a hoop.
Great.
That's cool.
And, and.
Do it.
PR wise, you know, we can really push that this is a transparency tool.
Yeah, you know, I think that I perused a couple of different counties, both in Colorado and the states. You know, I wanted to provide a Colorado example because I think that's really relevant to us. But this is pretty much industry standard of how folks are doing it. And again, talking about the maturity, just how we're operating, we're still pretty young, but this moves us into like toddler plus. And I think that's really exciting.
Colors, shapes.
Yeah.
Real-time data.
It's lickable, touching.
This is how we talk about our budget right now, this thirty-page line-by-line sheet, and it's.
Which is great if that's what you know.
But also, no, I think that it's like, it can be manipulated by the people who don't understand in that. So then when other people try to like tell the story of what our line item budget says, other people don't know and so they just expect that that person's correct.
Yeah.
Whereas this makes it far more egalitarian. That's lovely, do it, go today, tomorrow, what do you need, Liz?
Time.
Any coffee?
Guys.
A long time.
Okay, you can use my office, lock it.
Capital improvements. Um so I'm gonna um suggest something in policies and you can say nah if you don't like it. But I think a capital improvement uh review group would be great. So we actually deep thought about and information on capital improvements or assets that we wanna invest in from the lens of more than one human.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and that aligns with our community's plans for the rest of the life of the community. It can't be a standalone, these are our assets, this is what we'll do, with no context, you're like, what does our community wanna see? Where do we wanna see ourselves going in the future, what do we wanna prioritize?
Yeah.
So um I looked at the Unumistic Capital Plan and I'm pretty close with um the look that does these because I was asking just, hey, what is the best thinking, how can we do something actionable that also is not so complex that we can't manage it? So what I would like to see is that we have a group that reviews capital requests and that we kind of have more of a discussion with like, how, how much is this gonna cost us? How much will we spend in one year? How much will we spend in three years? How much have we spent in the past uh for different types of assets? And you can see they do funding by department, I think that's really helpful to see. This is also a Power BI dashboard, which I love, because you can click through the plan, you can click through the multi-year plan, you can look at the future plans, you can look at a PDF of it if you don't wanna click through things and you wanna print it out and bring it to your meeting. What I really love is that their, their plan is not so overdone, it's hard to implement. Um one downfall of seeing of our asset management plan is we're trying to understand the assets we currently have
Mm-hmm.
and we're still, which is great, we should, we need to have those recorded correctly, we need to depreciate them. But we can't just not plan for the future because we're like, no, we gotta get this done before we can plan. We are taking on new capital assets every year, regardless of what on earth happened back here.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you really have to like kind of have the best thinking by a group of individuals and hoping that the county manager and V so, VOC can think about who could be good strategic partners and people to have input so we can build a plan, so we can be not getting further behind because we're waiting to plan for the future till we fix the past. So I think this is a big thing I really would like to, to work on as a county this year and create a plan like this that's posted so people know what we're planning to invest on and can input.
Yes.
Um with the help of Liz, who's way better at IT than I am, but I do love Power BI and members. So I think the two of us collectively can build out a cool dashboard like this. I would just like the best thinking from, from the partners we identify. at the county who should be a part of this group to start to review capital request and think about, do we say yes or no? And does this align with our plans for the next five years? And if it does, how are we gonna continue to manage it in a way that's responsible?
Of course, in context, what's been happening is departments send in their capital requests, ten reviews, yes or no, goes before you guys.
Yeah.
No presentations, just like high-levels, moving along.
And now we're doing the team.
And trying to do a multidisciplinary team on a lot of internal decisions so that it's, have a lot of different points of view, perspectives. Devil's advocate, thought thinker, you know.
Thought thinkers.
Partnering has thought.
I love people who wanna say no.
People who wanna say no make you think harder about your why for your yes, and it's very important. And it's very important for people to be able to see that information, the why behind the decisions we make. As a county, and I like this for that reason.
Can I scroll for a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so I've been reaching out to people, trying to just get like the baseline of how does one create a plan for the closure of a mine? If one were to do that. And. And, um, it would be cool, like Clear Creek County had this, um, oh, God, now I can't remember the phrase, but it was like, um, averaging. It was an averaging plan. So over ten years, they asked Climax, or they asked Freeport-McMoRan to do, uh, like an averaging of so many years before they paid so that they could kind of like phase out what they were getting from the mine. And there were some issues with that, with that math. But when we implement some sort of fiscal plan, multi-generational plan, that could lean us off of the mine, is that something that one, we could potentially put into this that somebody could say like, oh, okay, they're using this money for these things? And, oh, they're sending this money in this direction? And this is why we're seeing this taper with this increase? Is that the kind of thing that this could allow the public to view?
Yeah, I think we could create a tool for Climax. I, I love projections. I love to project the best first and most likely case scenario and then track how you're doing and then update your projections with actuals. I don't know, like they did. Um, so I think the same thing could be done for Climax. And take an average of what we've gotten, adjusted each year as we get more and start to see, are we tracking along the projection for the worst case? Most likely case or best case scenario?
Right.
So we can be strategically thinking about, okay, here's where we are at and what we thought we would do and be continually adjusting that production with actual data that we get, knowing what we received. So, yes.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Remember when Nell said we should, you know, we shouldn't be using their money for general fund operations? We should be using it for capital improvements.
Yes.
Yeah.
How many years delayed was that? Oh, I'm sorry. No, how many, I'm good at tax.
Oh.
Just kidding.
The second part of that.
Just post it through.
Okay.
Sorry.
How many years delayed was it? Two or three that they said like?
Three.
Three, okay. So in the event of a mine closure, we still get, and this isn't, it's not enough time, obviously, but we still get three years of tax revenue after the closure.
Well, and it, 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 it tapers down. Like, if the mine doesn't like stay at full capacity and then all of a sudden it closes and you've got three years, the mine will, will ratchet down its.
So she said like, closer. Do not have actual full, I'm sorry, three years. Three years and then I'll respond to what we decide in terms of.
You said don't something, I'm like, wait, am I saying the wrong thing?
I was just gonna say for hard stop, don't count on that because it depends on what happens with the economy and the market. And they are publicly traded, um, corporations. So clear is always the risk of that hard stop.
Okay.
With them, so.
The potentiality, but regardless, worst-case scenario, we're still got three years of mine taxes coming in after the hard stop.
Right.
Because we're getting taxes now from. Okay. They were trying to explain how delayed, the delayed taxes.
Cause you do your, you do your, you, you close your books for the previous year in that next year and then you pay.
The following.
The following year. So like right now.
So it's a two-year delay.
No, then you pay. It depends on if you get an extension or not, which I'm assuming a Fortune 500 company gets an extension 'cause that takes a minute.
Okay. Two or three years, somewhere in there depending on extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, in two years is not enough time to create an economy that makes up a lot of costs.
No, it's not. But, you know, at the same time, I just, you know, they're not this like, um, instantaneous thing that, you know.
Right.
I don't know.
Not for us.
I'm just trying to visualize what this thing's gonna look like in the event something like that does happen.
Right.
And also, it comes into, into account of like how they said, you know, uh, they're, they were saying what their taxes they reported were, but what we actually had for revenue this year was way different because we've gone up two years ago. So then they were like, oh, well, your next couple should be really good. So that's hard for me to wrap my head around, but.
I think that's really the mining proceeds that they're talking about.
Yeah, just like the sales tax from the materials they sell.
Yeah. Yeah.
What they take out from the extraction.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll continue, even if they close, we'll continue getting property taxes from them. It'll go down, obviously, so they won't have active buildings, et cetera. But the mining by proceeds is what we are going to start talking about building into the budget about how do we live off of 7.6 million dol-? 7.6 million dollars less a year?
We have to go into it.
Um, and I thought we had way more in our mine closure fund than we did. Don't, unfortunately, we have about 3.7 million dollars in it since 2011.
To drop in the bucket.
I think the overall statutory language around it, though, that we can only touch the 3.7 for a huge decreasing valuation of property taxes, um, or a property. That's the only way we could touch that. I think we could see some major impacts to our budget without property taxes going down. So I do think this year, we should start talking about a referred measure to change the, uh, mine closure fund, A, so that we start tying our hands to how much money we need to put into there. And then, B, opening up when we can touch that funding. A, I would like to be able to put funding set aside for diversification of our economy.
Yeah.
And the, oh crap, like the mine closed. That is an event that will allow us to use that should we have a huge overnight drop in general fund. Well, it's not just the general fund that this, that all of the special districts pay into this. So it's not just the county that do. I chatted with the treasurer last week, not the treasurer, 'cause the treasurer's staff and the assessor last week 'cause Patrick was eating pay somewhere gorgeous. Um, anyway, it's, it's, it's not just the county that puts into that. And it's not just the county that can take out. But that seven, that 3.7, the county general fund should not count on that because it's the school districts and CMC, the ridiculous share that tax.
Sure, we could maybe, sorry, I didn't mean to ramble, ramble the end of your statement there. Um, we could like develop this further and add some like layers to it of like maybe some partitions between different things and say, okay, like, this percentage of this fund falls under this, you know, in, in this area where it can be triggered by these things. This will always be preserved for schools or whatever, hospital or who knows what else.
Yeah.
But what you're saying is basically we should take a look at.
Targets, right.
Let me do this. If you all really wanna take home a general approach, you're gonna have to tie the hands with the trivia CCs.
For sure.
And do that, I do refer a measure.
Okay. Has, have they dipped into this money the last few years?
No.
And how long has this been in existence? And this is all? 2011, so we've got what, fourteen years of this? And we're, we've only got 3.7 million in there.
So for the past couple of years, we've contributed a hundred thousand from the general fund to the mine closure fund.
No. But that doesn't sound like all that's been attributed to it in the past.
Yeah, I can pull what others are contributing. I would assume not very much. That's it.
Um. I would like to see more clear language around agreements. We love to make agreements that are not well-defined and then how many county it, you're trying to have, who should I be reaching out to for what amount? So I think it would be great to find the historic language behind this and think about changing it to be very direct about, okay, who's putting in what? Who is billing them for what? Make a lot of agreements where it's just assumed that in perpetuity someone will remember they're putting into things. And that's a poor way to operate and it leaves no paper trail. If one of us in this room is gone ever. So I do think it would be great to pull the language, try to figure out if it's defined, who's putting in what and how that operates. So that we can be intentional about knowing what pieces each person could use.
Yeah.
So let's have some time to dig into it. Maybe think about updating the language to be very clear. How much do we put back and when?
Yeah, let's make it part of the whole picture.
Yeah.
So we're not just doing little projects, but making it more like a, a, a plan. And how the plan can change and how we need to like tie other people or agree other people to the plan.
Yeah.
Um, as a, just throwing this out there, as a last little corner to look for stuff like this, especially from this era and even before, that filing cabinet in my office is loaded with like folders and folders and folders in mostly alphabetical order. And I'm willing to bet there's a whole binder in there or file about with just stuff related to this. So if you're having trouble finding things, anytime, go in that filing cabinet, start digging around 'cause I open it up and I flip through it and I, I get overwhelmed and I close it back up again. There's just so much stuff in there.
That's so interesting.
Um, anyone in, anyone in this room, go in there anytime. My door will, will never be locked.
So that, I, I think that was one of the priorities that you all said. That was like top priority for economic development, this airport. And then really having like a, a plan around the closure of Climax. And so we have a kind of little mini-retreat in May to start figuring out how we would like to see the budget move forward ahead of everything. Climax is gonna be part of that. And then also trying to have some more priority-based, um, budget decisions. So having, within departments, they have like a bunch of requests that they want. They prioritize those requests for you all to review. And then there's also requests across departments. So say three different departments are asking for a million-dollar increase to do XYZ. You all are gonna be able to make decisions on budgets within departments' priorities and then across departments for priorities. What's been happening lately is just we build the budget. This is what we've been in.
Right.
We say, yeah, and it hasn't been enough detail or I would say decision with the BOCC about what's within a budget, priorities, and then big priorities across departments.
So this would be like a good tool, almost like a crystal ball for them. Like, hey, you know, your, your level four, five, and six priority budget items in the event of a mine closure or some other drastic, you know, budget crisis event, those would be likely denied. Your one, two, and three items would be, you know, what we're gonna try and preserve under any circumstances. Like kinda what you're explaining or?
More of every year, you get to, they're gonna make these priorities.
Okay.
So you're gonna be like, yeah, all these sound great. Or this isn't really that important to us and it's not that high of a priority for you. Let's say no, we can use that money elsewhere for something else, you know? Um, it just helps, I think it just helps make decisions with a more informed mindset. Instead of the BOCC trying to be like, well, that doesn't seem important.
Yeah.
But actually, the, the staff and the professionals and the roles are like, actually, that's my number one, like I can't, yeah.
Yes.
That helps, that helps so much. I love that, yeah.
Okay, so you're thinking of it as actual like beneficial to the daily operations? And my brain's kinda going into like word, word games or something like, what happens?
No, I don't hate that idea.
No, I think Climax is gonna be a little bit more high-level of like, hey, before we do anything with the general fund, do we wanna take out X amount per year? Put X amount into a fund? And the other amount goes into economic development that you all decide how we are going to work on to diversify our economy? Like those types of decisions.
That's what we're gonna do.
Um, tying our hands before we even start to build our budget, right? It should be as soon that money is up there.
The one is the fourteen-year plan. Fourteen to twenty-year plan. The other one is the, oh, how do we just make daily operations? And the operations that are here for us.
So this might be good things for you to start thinking about, about what you wanna see for mine closure, for priorities, for FTE benefits, et cetera, for that July meeting. This is just, this is also why we're having this meeting now. So start having you think, this is the number one, like, power we all have. Is the most important power you have too. So, um, feel free to flex it, you know? Um, just wanna make sure you have time to start thinking about it and be ready for July and then certainly October.
I like that tying, tying the hands of future administrations. This is what you gotta bring to it. And then best-case scenario, they're talking eighty years more of, 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 uh, molly, so.
Right.
That'd be great if you could get up to a savings account that slowly increased and then you had a capital improvements account.
Yep.
Alan suggested, like that. And then maybe separate the school and the hospital. You guys have your own accounts or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that so like you said, we're not fighting or when the time comes.
Well, and hopefully the rest of the, I mean, the way I've been looking at it is hopefully the rest of the taxation districts that are dependent on mine are also on board with the plan, so we're moving as a whole community, not just the county government.
Right.
Because I think that will help, like, yes, I I see like why tying hands are important, but also like impelling future leaders to be like, yes, this is a good idea. And other people in the community are bought in and this is a good idea and the will of the people is that this is a good idea, as opposed to just like hamstringing people. I'd rather like, I'd rather impel them, I agree, we should like make some controls. But we're just saying like it should not just be the county making the decision.
Right.
It should be C M C making the decision, it should be the school district making the decision and we're all driving towards a healthier, more diversified economy that could withstand the price of molly dropping, that could withstand um the mine closure. Even if it comes before twenty, before the date that they talked about, not quite publicly.
Well, how how hard would it be to tie future hands? I mean, any board could just say, hey, we're gonna untie our hands now.
Pretty much, and I feel like if that's kinda what we're gonna be doing, if we're gonna rewrite the mine closure fund a little bit, make it more responsible, the next boards would do the same thing if they wanna be irresponsible and be like, hey, let's throw them everything, let's put them over town super play all winter.
They could, I think it would be important coming out, the local perspective is, there's a reason taper hasn't been overturned already.
Right.
It's really hard to pass something that would say, hey, let's not plan for the mine closure, we wanna use this money now.
Right.
It's way easier for us to pass something saying tying hands would be physical and responsible and thoughtful about when this happens, not yet.
But when it, but when the mine closure fund was enacted, I remember Bud Elliott was like the major driver of that. He didn't get other people on board, he just created it kind of like as a as a leader in the community, other people weren't bought in. The that's why the mine closure fund is anemic, cause it's not connected to a bigger plan.
Yeah.
It's just like, let me see what I can push through to try to save us in the future, as opposed to like, hey, should we not have what happened last time happen again? Like, let's learn, let's be together in it.
Yeah, start at least, you know, the ball is rolling.
Yeah. I'm grateful for it, I'm just saying, it wasn't part of a bigger idea.
Yeah.
I think that's why it's important to get input and also have these discussions so that when we are deciding to do things, they get documented. So when I notice a lot of to say yes to things or that we're gonna do things and then it's not clearly like defined or communicated and then it actually never happens.
Yeah.
It's just written that we're, you know, doing things, but you're you're like, well, I I feel like the intention was to set us up for success, but then no one knew that it was voted on and it never got accomplished.
Then.
It just was a nice thing to say in a meeting and and we want for the decisions we make to be well thought out, documented, actionable and actually done, so we don't find out, you know, two two years later as you're looking back at audits, you're like, oh, never.
Yeah.
It happened here or there was no action.
Yeah, it's fully fleshed out all the way across the finish line instead of, I mean, we're kinda doing it already, I mean,
Yeah. Yeah.
In human nature, it's like, you know, we've got the attention span of a fruit fly. So it's just sorta like we we look at all these little things like, okay, we can do this, this, the reality is each one of those little things turns into this big giant thing and then we lose focus, cause there's so many other things on the table, so.
I do, I do wanna say like the the mine kind of being thoughtful and proactive around it is,
Sorry, that's just.
it might be harder with some of our partners.
Yes.
That's, no matter what you hear, or if we're even late on some of our audits, or we're trying trying to be more professional internally, we're in a pretty great financial situation, um we have a good amount of money in our general fund, we, all of our budgets, we have been operating in the plaque, et cetera, but um not all of our partners are passing decisions.
Yes.
Right, school districts.
School districts, oh, school districts.
Yes.
Le- let them say in like, I I know C M C's gonna ask for their mills, I think, to be raised, I think, I don't know, maybe this year.
City.
So um, and also said they were okay. Yeah, I think they're good, I think they wanna do more, so they're gonna ask for more money, which is totally fine, um but
Yeah. Yes.
I just wanna say like, I I'm really grateful that we're in a position that way and to be able to be this more thinking and we should take advantage of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and that might be the multiple generational plan is that it might take multiple generations of this board to like get our partners on board. So we might have a plan, but like the community wide thing might take a few iterations.
Yeah. Yeah.
How does the college ask for, do they ask us to raise the debt?
No.
They just raise all themselves?
They do.
They have to go.
It's a regional, it's, yeah.
It's a region.
It's the C M.
Oh, statewide, yeah.
It's the C M C.
Oh, except for the weird district, yeah.
Their districts, yeah, yeah, there's a star field, uh pitchin', wherever they have, emphasis.
So far across the state, statewide. Same boat, yeah.
Right.
That seems like a tough ask for the voters to approve that.
I think everybody, well, I would like to think everyone understands the costs of everything are going up and revenues are stagnant, you know, too, a lot of, I think a lot of folks out there can understand that. You know, like, it's sorta like, you know, you can't pay the people for the burgers what you paid them in nineteen ninety eight to you know, we're we're running one trillion five, like.
Yeah, anyone white is not a billion dollar now.
So, yeah, so I guess, you know, they gotta understand that C M C is in the same boat that anyone else working on a fixed income is, is like everything's getting squeezed from inflation.
Don't the board trustees vote on the mill?
That they're trying to raise the mill though.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Oh. Of the people?
Well.
The taxing district?
And every district that has some.
But when we do our mill certification every year, they just send us the mills, the five or six different entities, and then we certify and send it there.
Yeah, so I think they probably have what we have, they can go up to a certain amount of mills and they can just get in there.
Yes, yes, oh, and they wanna, oh, oh.
They wanna go.
Go.
Got it, yes, okay.
And to pay for housing and trades.
Yeah.
Cause they went down, they they expect, tell me if I get this right, but they expected the state to cut what was going to C M C, so they preemptively lowered their mills.
Oh, we need to stand for what, yeah.
And now. Yeah, and now they have to make up for that difference and it ended up getting cut anyway. So now they have to not only increase their mills, but increase past what their mills are allowed because of the state cuts.
Got it, got it, got it.
So.
True.
They tried to, they tried to, they tried to make an offer of goodwill and in the end they got screwed.
Yeah.
It's really complicated, it is, like everything.
Well, hang on, I wanna, I'm just super curious. Can you control that mill?
Oh.
This is gonna be down here.
This one?
This. Yes, this one. But I think you, they're gonna come and present to you all, but we are, I think, on the top of the list if that does pass to get a housing project here.
Yeah.
We give we give them almost three hundred thousand dollars of our harbor dollars to help get those housing plans up out of, like, up off the ground. And I think they're, we're like first in line to get that money, which would be great.
So if the entire region votes to increase the mills, it's Mattville's campus that will be benefiting from that, and that's one of the apartment buildings they wanna build up. You know, on that land and drive.
Yeah, they now they now the fan, foundations farm are still there, right?
Yeah, the taps.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the stewards, too.
So, second people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if it passes, we're like.
And it wouldn't just be students, it's, you know, faculty and alumni.
So, yeah, transitional housing.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
So.
Any questions, feedback, guidance? Is this too much, not enough information?
Just right.
Yeah.
I just, I wanna say, I'm so sorry I kept interrupting, but I appreciated that every question I had literally the next slide was answering them. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Slavemaker.
There was just such good thought partners and I'm really hopeful and excited about how we think I need this money at Lake County.
Yeah.
And I was just gonna keep getting, we're just gonna keep developing, it's exciting.
Yeah.
It's not.
It is exciting, feels like we're like, I mean, we're gonna benefit from all you guys' support, it's not, we appreciate.
You're gonna make us look great.
That's what we're here for.
That's what we are here for.
The county government is awesome.
Is that mostly just because of the county manager position drove the cohesiveness of it all? Because before that, it was like three people up here going, well, why don't you take Red Bridge, I'll take Rack, you take. So is that kinda how how this evolved?
This is a great example of how investing in the expertise you need in certain strategic positions pays off.
Right.
And not just with county manager, but with finance and operations and deputies and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
And Tim, Eric Holden?
Yes.
Thank you.
He created Liz's department.
Liz's department didn't exist at all.
Yeah, we did that role.
Finance was one point five people.
Yeah.
The deputy deputy didn't exist. Deputy didn't exist, cause Tim didn't exist.
We're only, and and so like thinking about, we keep talking about maturity and growth, we are a year and a half in to working with a budget like this.
Yeah.
So I started in March two years ago and that's the second time departmentally we did budget reporting. Ugh, it was clunky. And so each time we do this, each time we invest in one of these steps, it just gets clearer, cause it's adding to that experience that we have doing all of this. So this is the best budget presentation that we've done, thank you for the feedback that it was thoughtful, cause we've crashed the work a couple times.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we're.
Yeah, before this, it was people make a handshake deals, like if you knew the right commissioner,
Yeah.
you could fight for it in this room and get what you needed.
This 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 experience too has also helped the department heads and and executives grow in terms of their understanding of the budget process.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's a gigantic team, you know, the more we can get everybody on the same page, so there's machines around.
So just to clarify, like when someone's saying, you know, if they got up here, they would let you make the county manager position, there's people in the community that think that way, so now I have something to tell, I mean, it's it's impossible to go back. Unless you had three county manager candidates sitting here, but that ain't me.
It's not how our community's gonna build trust either.
Yeah. But the uh the money we would lose from the operational inefficiency
Yeah.
of eliminating these positions would be much more costly than what we would save by not having the positions there in the first place. And when Lauren points out, like, we're in a good place, our general fund, you know, and I I don't wanna talk badly of other counties, but man, there's so many counties in the state, uh sixty four of them that are in rough shape, they're in the red, you know, I mean, we just saw on the screen what some of these other counties are dealing with, you know, and they're much bigger and a little bit of a different kind of, you know, a little bit of apples to oranges there, but not really, like, we're.
We have a, we have a mine.
We have a mine.
Take that mine out and we would be struggling, it would be a mess.
Yeah.
So, you know.
But three, three has casinos out of line, right?
Yeah, but the casinos have their, they're in their own district, is that right? And so they don't pay, they have a special district where they, I I met a guy, I met one of their commissioners and and they don't get all the benefit from uh casino, right?
No, cause it's tribal, some of it.
Yeah.
Some of it, I don't know how that works, that's how we have it.
They get a lot of revenue from that.
Brother, you are the school of Gilpin County, and I know a lot of them casinos paying for their schools, but I don't, I just.
Well, to your point, Matt, it's it's just seems to me that from the outside, it looks like there's all this extra load in here, but from the inside, you realize the level of operational efficiency, it's all breaking and the improvements that are being made that are.
Yeah. Well, it's great, thank you guys, and then one more uh point, um the email from the about the mine and the revenues from the mine.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard to decipher, but it seems like he's thinking we're gonna give a million dollars in revenue, less.
So here's, so.
For Mark?
He and I, he and I talked about it last week.
For Mark. Okay.
Um and we talked about it before you sent that email, I wish you could like interpreted it the way we had talked through it. But their their revenues were lower by thirty four million dollars. And they use, because they used that that profit and invested it in their capital. So their their personal property tax increased by thirty four million dollars, even though their severance tax decreased by that amount. So it's actually flat what will be coming in, it's just coming in from a different location.
Oh, well, that's good news.
Yeah, so like we walked, we walked through it and he was like, oh, I never looked at this stuff. Oh, this is really interesting, and so, I don't know, we were going through a lot of spreadsheets, but I can say that that thirty four million dollars, thirty six, thirty four, that was, looked like they they were short year over year by that mu- much, it's because they used that profit and invested it.
Hmm.
So we'll still be getting the taxes through personal property, not severance.
Say, look, you walked into the.
Well, no, it was a jo- it was a team.
Yeah.
I love budgets, I've spent a lot of time with, I've spent a lot of time with budgets, so.
A little more on Mark's side of things, where I see stuff that looks scary and things, I'm like, oh god.
It's not, he's not supposed to interpret it for us, you know, like, that's not what his job is.
Okay. Uh.
So when we were talking through it, it was the first time where he was actually looking at it to see, it seems like I adjusted the assessment that it's the treasurer who does the taxing, so he's not looking at it to see what money is coming in.
Yeah.
That's how, that's what he said to me, like.
Well, he came from a well-intentioned place, right? Like, he's trying to be like, oh, let's answer this thing.
He marks his best.
Yeah, he's awesome.
Worrying for you guys, check this out.
Yeah.
But maybe um for his own workload and, you know, he should have.
He said he was gonna start sending it, he said that he never sends that information, so he said he was gonna start sending it to us. So I'm glad he did, I just, we did sit down and look at it.
Can I do a follow up now, just to make sure we're all, yeah, please, I'm appreciating, because this isn't, this isn't my profession, like, I could've got it wrong too, but that's what I s- that's what we saw when we were looking at the spreadsheet, so, yeah.
Cool, well, that's a relief.
Did you expect us to go till twelve? This is awesome.
We hoped it did not, you know, we did our job right.
Oh, really? We're done till one?
Legend, but.
Yeah, take that ambition smart thing.
Yeah, yeah, telling you a great story.
Oh, good.
I guess I'm gonna have to self-prove mine or maybe use it as my first one.
I don't know, I just got the the message from Sammy that I was like, you got till the eleven, and not just, she told me that like weeks ago, so.
I know.
I just wanna have it there.
Oh, yeah, essentially.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, guys.
Stop chatting.
Can't wanna hang out for a while, uh it is ten forty five A M, we're going to conclude this morning's much shorter than anticipated work session of Lee County Board of County Commissioners.